Because a devolution of the confidential information likely would render the proposed actions ineffective until such time as the Board of Alderman determines that the purpose of the confidentiality would no longer be served and devote by roll call.
Would you please call roll?
Alderman O'Brien votes yes. Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Guevava?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Senate?
Yes.
Alderman Klee?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes, but don't forget Alderman Thibodeau. You missed him.
Did I?
You missed him.
Are you still here?
We need him for quorum.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No, we don't.
Yes. Okay, thank you. You have nine yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Madam President, may I ask that you take a recess so we can get the next presentation up and running?
We will take a five-minute recess?
Five minutes. Yep, five minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I left my door open. I left my door open. I lost my wallet somewhere. I don't even know where. So I have no identification on me.
I was there when it was at Veterans Homes.
Yeah, it still is.
We also bought all the historic retail from the town and filled it up during COVID. It remains 100% full. We've never lost a tenant. And it's been just a really great adventure for us. It's been a great partnership with the city, so excited about that one. Go ahead.
Do you want to see a tour?
No, let's not do videos yet. When we got going in Kannapolis, the city manager from the town next door, Concord, called us. It's Concord there, by the way, not Concord. I'm told over and over, because I always say Concord when I'm down there. In Concord, which is the county seat, again, right outside of Charlotte, they just built a brand-new city hall, they built a brand-new courthouse. There was about 1,500 public employees in the downtown, and they wanted housing in the downtown. And so, we took three publicly-owned sites and put multifamily on them. That project is 305 units, finished up this spring, and we're in lease-up now. I can't read that, so I can't talk about it from here. Yeah, why don't you take it?
All right. Tim Engelbert, Random Paulson Architects, teamed up with Peter and LMG as architect on the project. What I want to do is actually just take a minute, step back in time. When we start to look at this whole process, if we go all the way back to 2019, what we see is the city has sent out a feasibility study for the existing elementary school. With the question, or existing middle school, with the question being for the middle school, could we repurpose it, or do we need to look for a different site? Through that process, it was determined through economics, feasibility, that it was in the best interest of the city to leave the school behind and to look for a new site. Fast forward through time, to 2024, which is where we are today, there was an RFP that was sent out. There's a couple of stages in the middle. In that 2024 RFP that was issued, there was two questions that were asked within it. The first question was, can you bring in, as a developer, diversity of housing components? And can we also look into keeping the keep? So, in the city's ask of diversity in housing, we run into a couple of different things that we're looking at from an architectural side. One of it is diversity of housing, so where we're looking at that with Peter, he's got two bedrooms, single-bedroom, studio houses. And then he's also looking into doing townhouses. Now, if I go back in time about six months, Plain New Hampshire had a webinar, or in-person, actually. And in that, what was discussed is that there's a significant need for townhouses in the state. Cost of single-family housing has continued to skyrocket, and there needs to be that intermittent space that lives between the single-family house and the apartment. Additionally, if we go back a little bit before that 2024 RFP, the initiative was issued out, which was reimagine Nashua. So when we look at this 2024 initiative, we're also looking at how to reimagine Nashua. It's not reconstruct and rebuild, it's reimagine, and that's important. So zooming in on this site that we're looking at, it was previously the South Common. And when we think about what the South Common is, it's an area of gathering, it's an area of social activity. It's bringing the community together. Now, how that happens, you create recreational spaces, you have areas for active school activities, playing, social activities that are coming together. So this area has always been interactive throughout its time. When we start to think about that South Common, and then we start to apply the ideas of that social activity to modern architecture, what we start to realize is you need to create a village center. What we want to do is bring community together. And when we're looking to create a village center, what we're doing is we're putting eyes on to the center. So we're building up architecture around a green space, and we're having the buildings directly look into it. We're also creating a more intimate space. We don't want it too big, because when you get too large of a field, it's not as inviting. What you're also starting to do is you're creating dynamic spaces, especially in New Hampshire. We can't just have a space that's activated in the summer. We need to have a space that can get activated in the winter. Peter made a great comment the other day, and you'll see some of the slides later on. We could look for, using this pavilion and this central courtyard spaces, maybe somebody comes in and they have trees, and they sell trees in the area. The idea being that it's not just a stagnant space, it's dynamic and it's always changing. So, when we start to take all of these ideas, and I'll just splash this up for a minute, we'll come back to it and we'll talk about it a lot more. We create a space that is green, that's got the streetscape into it, we're slowing traffic down through it, and we're allowing interaction. So that southern area where the community is gathering, coming together, we have commercial spaces, or we have interactive spaces on the ground floor that we can line with glazing, we have multifamily up above it, we have a pavilion, so that we're allowing it to be flexible throughout the year. So, before we even get here, though, let's take a second to kind of step back to how we even got here. We're reimagining Nashua right now. So, when we're starting to reimagine this block, what we start to realize in the block is actually it's too large from an urban planning standpoint. Urban planning wants a block that is walkable to the pedestrian to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 200 to 400 feet in length. This block, as it currently sits, is roughly 750 feet by 650 feet. Now, that is a little bit too large to create an interactive space where you want to walk past. So what we start to talk about is how do we take that block and how do we bisect it? How do we break it down into more manageable sections to interact with it? So what we first do is we bisect it, going north to south. What you can kind of see there in the red is vehicular traffic. That vehicular traffic is, if we go from the south going north, entering into the center of the block. And then when it enters into the center of the block, we're slowing that traffic down by forcing them to go around a green space. So you can't just bisect it and go immediately through, you have to slow down, you have to interact with it. The second movement that we make to break the block up into the smaller quadrants is a horizontal movement, going back to Main Street. And when we're looking at the initial reimagine Nashua, we know that the redevelopment of Main Street is in the process of happening currently. The idea that Main Street is going to continue its way down to this area is just a matter of time. Walkability on Main Street is going to be a driving movement. So, we know that we want to create a connection that is purposeful back to Main Street, and we want to drive that walking into our block. So, we're taking a pedestrian traffic movement, then, and we're bisecting horizontally, drawing that traffic in, so pedestrians are walking in. Another thing you can just see here that's easy at this stage is the gray. Now, the gray is the apartments, the gray is the townhouses. What you'll notice is we've actually taken those smaller blocks of the gray, and we pushed them to the street. And then we have the multifamily in the center of it, which is the larger, high-shaped buildings. The reason that we do that as an architectural statement is that when you take the building and you push it towards the street, you create a sense of walkability. If you think of walking downtown, the buildings are close to the street. If you think of a Home Depot, or a Lowe's, or any shopping center, that building is separated from the street, which is why you don't ever want to walk past it, right? Because it's separated farther away. So, when we take those buildings and we push them to the street, you actually interact with that building, you feel safer because there's eyes on to that street. There's not the segregation and separation from the buildings. If you look at another study when you're looking into this, and this one right here is highlighting, when you're looking at architectural, how do you create a space that is environmentally friendly? How do you create buildings that are environmentally friendly? And one of the main drivers that you can look at is solar orientation. So, the orientation of the buildings works well from an environmental standpoint. But what it also allows us to do is, because that sun is going around the south, it is bathing the courtyard space that we're seeing in the center, where you see the green. And by bathing that area, you're driving interaction into it. If you think of areas that you want to hang out in, you always want to hang out in the brighter areas. When you're hanging out with your friends, you're hanging out with your family. You're never hanging out in the shadow. So, we're purposefully orienting and building off of the keep that you can see circled, and allowing that sun to get a deeper exposure. What we're also looking at, and you don't necessarily see it here, but you'll see it in later renderings, is the bars of the multifamily building are actually stepped a little bit lower, so that when that sun is working its way around from the east to the west, those buildings aren't as tall. The bars on the north and south that are going horizontally on page, those are the taller parts of the structure. So when we're looking at that scale, we look at it from where we were looking at before, which is, we call it the grain. It's the scale of the piece of rice, for instance, where how big is it versus neighbor. We start to look at that, then, in a section, because what we want to make sure that we're doing is not taking an extremely large building and just pushing it to the street. We want to be mindful of the neighbor. So when we're being mindful of the neighbor, if you were to look at the right side where we have Alma Street, just to the right of that Alma Street, Single Family Residential. Then you have Alma Street, then we have the townhouse. The townhouse is the same scale as that house, we're immediately adjacent to it. And then, off of the townhouse, tucked off of the street, you see the parking area. So this is really mindful that we're doing this. We're not taking the townhouse, pulling it into the center of the block, and then pushing the parking to the street. That's honestly more economical for Peter, if I were to be honest. But it's intentional for a reason that we want the building to be to the street, so that we're purposefully creating a more walkable environment. As we then kind of shift our way past that parking area, you come to the multifamily buildings. Those multifamily buildings are starting to get the density into it that is the request of the RFP. The request of that RFP was bring housing into it, because we know when we're looking into redeveloping Main Street that you can't have commerce unless you have people. Commerce doesn't survive unless you have people. So we need to get enough density into this block that we're then driving those businesses to want to be open over lunch. Because right now, the restaurants are not open over lunch, they're open in the evenings. So, if we can get enough density into the neighborhood, we now have the mothers and the fathers that are living there, that are working from home, that are then going out to the restaurants. As we then go into the center, into the village, you can see how it's then tucked in. It's creating that courtyard space, which we see courtyard spaces a lot in European towns, where you're creating that more intimate space, you have the taller building, where all the eyes are into it and are just looking into it. There's a section sketch up above it with the two green trees that you can kind of see. What we're highlighting there is that pedestrian movement that goes back to Main Street. And with it being so intentional, we want to drive that pedestrian movement, so we want to be mindful with the scale of that walkway. We also want to elevate that walkway so it's taller or higher up than the parking in the drivelines, so that it creates a hierarchy and it creates safety. So, we're purposely taking that traffic off of Main Street. We're allowing this sidewalk that we've elevated up and we've surrounded with trees to then come across the site in that horizontal movement. This is then taking that last drawing that we had of the site plan, giving it a little bit more color. Now, what we really start to see here is the adjacent Single Family Residential, and then you also start to see the townhouse immediately next to it. So that townhouse is next to the street. The townhouse also has a small green space right in front of it, so they get a small yard space. We've also purposefully taken sidewalks and wrapped the block with it, so that around the block, we have sidewalks. You have that grain of those townhouses that are similar. And then as we get to the center, you have the multifamily as well. In the center of the multifamily, then we get the courtyard space. And in the center of the courtyard space, we have the pavilion-type areas. What you also notice is on the bottom right, you still have that keep, it's still being anchored through the rest of the site with it. And then to the southeast of the keep, we have a green space, a small jewel park. Maybe it's potentially, we're looking at a couple of different ideas with it, we're still talking it through. Initially, the idea was that it was a support space for the keep, so that when there was breaks and everyone walked outside, they had a green space to hang out in. They also had an area that maybe that small jewel building is somewhere that sells ice cream or food and beverage. We then were thinking about, well, maybe that jewel building becomes a childcare. We started looking into market studies, and we realized that childcare is really important. We know that we have the hospital group right across the street, and that those nurses are traveling, and those nurses are traveling and need childcare. So we don't necessarily know if the childcare is going to end in this one location that we're looking at, but we do know that it's important to us from a developer standpoint. We've also had the keep, and we've given some parking dedicated to it. Now, this is just phase one. We know that there's going to be several iterations of this plan as we work through, figuring out how we keep the keep operational. But even though it wasn't asked of us, we still wanted to allow parking that was immediately adjacent to the keep. So, this is an area that if you're dropping off your kids, they can get dropped off at. If you're going in, you have an area that you can drop off your equipment and things like that. We also kind of highlight how that parking is tucked away off of the street. So you can really see it in this image very well. And then we start to get into the architecture. So, moving from, you know, that more civil design to getting into architectural design of it, you start to see the approach that we're taking. But before I even talk about this approach, I want to talk about the process that we got to get here. When we were first looking at this site, we were looking at, how actually do we keep the elementary school? And how do we reutilize it? We noticed a couple of things when we were looking at reutilizing the elementary school, because it was our first conversations that we met with, and the emails going back and forth with Harvey and Mark from the estimating department. What we realized from Harvey's experience was that there was GPR investigation done on slabs of the school structure. The reason that the school was reconstructed at a different location was because of the cost implications and the safety implications of trying to repair steel rebar that's encased in concrete in a slab. We also then realized that a school in itself is an institutional area. And with that, the architectural design of the building is not inviting like we'd want for multifamily. When you get into that type of a building, actually what we're doing is we're taking the structure itself, and we're purposefully stepping it away from the streetscape. We're creating courtyards in front of it. If you think of a courthouse, a courthouse is never directly on the street, it's usually pushed back. If you think of the several other buildings like that, we're stepping it back. We're usually elevating it, so it's creating a sense of hierarchy and separation. Now, when the school was originally built, it was constructed as a high school. And it was created as a high school, especially in that year, they wanted to enforce discipline. So, that green space was there to create discipline, it was there to say, do not come into school when school's in session. That's not what we want when we're looking into architectural design for multifamily. We want to invite you, and we want you to want to interact with the street. So we actually want to take the building and push it to the street, we want to do the opposite. So, through those studies and discussions, we realized that it was in the best interest, actually, to say, yes, let's reimagine Nashua. Let's take this huge block, and let's step back, and let's figure out what's in the best interest. So, as we get there, then, we have the townhouses. Those townhouses, if you look at the architectural styles that we're looking at, are reflective and demonstrative of the surrounding context and buildings. The scale is similar, the colors, the roof angles, things like that. It's very New England. Well, we also have that parking, how I mentioned, we're pulling it away. You also notice we have a lot of trees lining the parking. And then in the center, we have the multifamily itself. It's a little bit hard to see at this scale, but if you walk up the rendering, what you'll notice is that pedestrian path that we are highlighting on the right-hand center of the screen is walking straight underneath the bar of that multifamily. So what we're doing is we're actually elevating that bottom floor plate. It's almost like we're lifting the skirt of the building and allowing you to be able to walk underneath it. So, we're creating a tunnel that goes underneath the building, and then what we're talking about is maybe that becomes a glass front onto it. So as we have we-work spaces, and we have other interactive social spaces, the glass of those social spaces then interacting back to that sidewalk, back to Main Street. We then, in the middle of the whole space, we have the amenities area, that courtyard space with that pavilion, kind of all pulled together.
Yeah, you remember numbers better than I do younger.
So, this is a breakdown of the units that we're starting to look at. If you were to take the Affordable Housing 59, that's broken up into the Multifamily 46 plus the For Sale Townhouses 13. We're coming up with how many houses we can fit into this block. Though this is chapter one of the conversation, ultimately, it's going to be, how many do we want, how dense do we want to get? This is how much, I think, we're saying we can fit. Do we want more green space? Maybe. If so, then we can pull these numbers back. But this is the RFP asking, bring me multifamily, reinvigorate Main Street. This is how much we can get into it. So this kind of has to break down of all those units that we have that were coming into it. It's got the affordable, it's got the market rate. We worked closely with, to figure out how much we can actually bring online from affordable housing. And this was directly applied for how much funding is available at a state level in the next couple of years. So, these numbers are real data numbers that aren't just pulled out of the air. They're real. This is how much funding the state has available to us.
We can talk a little bit about it. How many slides do we have left? Okay, because I'm tired. I can imagine they are. Just a couple of quick things, notes for you all to understand the way we approach, at least the multifamily side. The renter community these days has a lot of options. There's a fair amount of, even though we keep hearing that there's not enough, there are a lot of people in Southern New Hampshire building multifamily housing now. And a lot of them are very, very good at it. And so it's become a very competitive space. And what we find is that we've raised our children to really, really be demanding. I'll just make that comment personally, and then you guys take it for what you want. The demands for amenities are high. And so, we try to make sure that all the buildings have got some form, everybody wants some form of health something, whether it's higher-end gyms, whether it's yoga spaces, whether it's those types of things. We're now starting to build podcast rooms into the buildings, because apparently, everybody's a podcaster now, you need a laptop and a microphone. So you can have six people listen to you, mom, grandma, cousins. We're very, very serious about art in our buildings. And so, we don't do a lot of production art, we do a lot of original art. We have our own interior design operation now inside the company. Because of the amount of work we're doing in North Carolina, we've got access now to the furniture mills. And so, we're literally inventorying furniture so that we can build these spaces and build them cost-effectively. It's amazing, we can do for $100,000 now what we used to do for $500,000. So it's really been great for that. Workspaces are really important in most of the buildings that we own right now. Amazingly enough, like, almost 40% of the people across all the products never leave the house. They're working in the house. So, in a one-bedroom unit, in a studio unit, a Zoom room, or a nook of some sort where you can work, and not if somebody look at your unmade bed when you're on a call behind you, that type of stuff gets really important. When you're like me and you don't know how to do backgrounds, then whatever's behind you is what they're looking at. So, you know, those are the kind of things we think through. I just, you know, I wanted to make sure that we made a note that you guys know we think about that. I'd rather get into this later on, if you have questions and the like, because it's just us pounding our chests about how really great our plan is. More renderings. I wanted to, is this the last one? Okay, because I'd like to end on this, because this space gets me really worked up. It's, I don't know, in the old days, we used to build models, and we'd carry them around so you guys could see what we're thinking about and really get a sense of the scale. And now we do all this computer stuff that's not quite as good in my mind. The buildings are generally three and four stories, so they're not, if you're, we're not talking about doing like we did at High Street Flats, where we got to the property line, we pulled back an inch, and we went up as high as we could. That's basically how, sorry, but that's how we planned the building.
Cube, you fill it up.
Yeah, it's a cube. And it's a cube for a reason, because we wanted to get as many heads and beds as we could close to Main Street, get people into downtown, give people at BAE a place to live. You know, those are the kind of things that we were thinking of when we planned that building. Here, we're looking to try to fit into a neighborhood a little bit more. And, you know, I think the three-story model works really well in the long north-south axis, and then punctuated by these little sort of four-story hats at the end. But the idea that what we've been telling Tim to do is to focus on the ground floors of the building having really flexible spaces, so that if we have a lot of demand for community space, commercial space, anything like that in here, we can do it, and not have to redo what we've already been thinking about. And then punching holes through the buildings, and it's really, we should have rendered it better, but that east-west spine he was talking about, where the sidewalk comes from Main Street all the way through the project, all the way to the other side, there are holes in the building that you just walk through. There are no doors to go through, nothing. You just walk through there, the sidewalk is right through the building. And that was really important to us, because what we want is we want people going here. So grab your laptop on a day like today, oh my God, go grab your laptop, grab the dog, go out there, hang out. We also find 40 to 50% of people in our buildings have dogs. I don't know if it's the same 40 or 50% that work at home, but it's the same number of people. And so, this green space becomes just one more thing that's really important. And I think maybe that's why people are only having 1.2 kids, they have dogs instead. But there are needs for this kind of space that aren't being met in an urban setting. This is what you get when you move out to the suburbs. What we want to do here is give you the opportunity to live there and walk to Main Street, still be a part of the town and a part of the family. So I think at that point, Tim, we'll pause, and wherever you want to go from here.
So, Madam President, it sounds like we're at a phase now where we would be looking to take questions.
Okay. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the Board of Alderman go into non-public session by roll call pursuant to RSA 91-A semicolon three.
I'll second.
Okay. Would the court call the roll, please?
I'll second it, too.
Tyler, Alderman Gueva.
Alderman O'Brien votes yes. All the women, Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Gueva?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Senate?
Yes.
Alderman Clay?
Yes.
All the women, Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes. Do you have something against Alderman Thibodeau?
He must be invisible today.
Are you invisible? That's it.
I gotta sit up straight.
You were slouching.
You know what I did? I pre-
You don't need the government to give you that.
I pre-crossed off.
You're not-
Well, I got with Derek, so I apologize. Thank you. Glad to see you again.
And yes.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we have 10-2-0 for non-public session.
That motion carries. We are going into non-public at 7:56 PM.